Now, yes, my question to you, Prime Minister, is this. You know the history of Haiti, our family or African people in Haiti. I don't need to lecture you on that, the history is there. Now, the United States has had its boots on the necks of the Africa or African family in Haiti for hundreds of years. The amount of invasion and the massacres that has taken place in Haiti. At the hand, I'm going, I'm leading up to it. The amount of massacres that have been perpetrated on our family in Haiti. To this day, what I, the question I'm asking you is, what were the incentives that caused Jamaica, that traitor in Kenya, Ruto, and the rest of the Caribbean people to be sending mercenaries or Buffalo soldiers into Haiti to brutalize our people? Right, the United States don't want to do that dirty work anymore. So they hire out quislings to go there and to murder and to massacre our race, our people. I want to know, what is incentive for you leaders to take on such an assignment? That is my question to you.
Safe, right, nation, family, welcome back to the channel. Hope everyone is doing good today. Safe, right, nation, family. So recently, the Prime Minister, which is Andrew Holness and Kamina Johnson Smith, did a tone on meeting somewhere in the United States of America. And Jamaicans overseas didn't hesitate to pose some challenging questions or, you know, let the Prime Minister know their concerns, right, nation, family. So there was this one lady saying that NWC, which is the National Water Commission, keep on sending her numerous of bills and she keep paying them in her right, nation, family, and she's not receiving the commodity. So NWC has sent her bill and she have paid the bills and she not getting no water, right, nation, family. So she posed that question to the Prime Minister, say, you know, what are they planning on doing? Where in, you know, a lot of customers are keep on paying their water bills and they're not receiving the commodity. So what is the government gonna do to address these concerns? There was this next lady in her right, nation, family. Basically, she has said, oh, like, the healthcare system is not up to par in Jamaica. What are the government planning on doing to get that fixed and get it up to par? We know a lot of Jamaicans gonna say that the health system is not up to par for real and they will share the same sentiment, right? Alright, so there was a gentleman stating that flow services crappy in his hometown. He keep on paying flow and he's not receiving what he's supposed to be receiving. So basically, he might pay for something and he not get the full service, right, nation, family. There was this one gentleman who stood out. He asked the Prime Minister, what were the incentives given to the Jamaican government to send the soldiers and police to Haiti to fight crime, right, nation, family? So right about now, we're gonna make, you know, take a look on the video. Leave your thoughts and opinions down on the comment section until I'm gonna think about this one. And if you're new to the right nation channel, please continue subscribing and hitting that notification bell. Whenever you guys subscribe to the channel, helps the channel to grow and helps you to push it, the channel out there. So please remember to subscribe. And if you're not new, who don't know, if you do already, leave a like on the video and leave a comment as well. So take a look.
Good evening, Prime Minister, Holness. Um, I'm gonna make it fast, yes. Um, Consul General Wilson and Minister Johnson Smith. My name is Shari Linton Esquire and I am a Jamaican American. My parents were one of the first people to import goods from Jamaica to South Florida in the early eighties. So we understand the importance of importing goods. I own a tea company and my family currently makes drinks like root drinks and Irish moss, right? So my question this evening is, with the rapid growth of platforms like Alibaba that makes it easy to import goods from China, how can US businesses connect with Jamaican growers and suppliers to make wholesale and bulk purchases, which can in turn stimulate the Jamaican economy?
Alright, alright, thank you for that question.
Well, there's actually some work that's being done in that regard. I know that there've been one or two private sector attempts, but to get the mass use of their platforms hasn't really happened. But I did meet someone earlier who had a, was it eatjamaicafood.com?
Yes, he's here.
Who is launching a platform to do just that.
Perfect.
Eatjamaicafood.com, please, if you're here, please tell me if I'm getting your name right.
Do you step down?
Eatjamaica.com? Alright, yeah, and he's doing just that. So he's buying in bulk from different suppliers. Um, they're consolidating here and then shipping to you wherever you want across the world. That's his thing and so it's, I mean, it's incredible that you ask that question.
Well, that's great.
If anybody knows him, please introduce him to this lady, quick.
Yes, Shari's tea will be a big customer. Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Uh, the next question, Mr. Burke.
Okay, good night. Uh, my question is directed to Mr. Holness and Ms. Johnson Smith. So as a passionate resident, I would say, of Jamaica, um, I have been here for a number of years, since I was a teenager. I'm forty-four years old now, by the way. Um, what measures are you guys putting in place in the construction industry to ensure that there is proper oversight, a proper oversight body to protect us returning residents? Because I returned to Jamaica last year, November, and I bought into a brand-new community in Otterias and I have been just plagued with a number of issues, mold. If that was here in the US, they would have closed down that place entirely, the entire place. And I have done everything possible to try and get the developers to remedy the issues to no avail. So what I have complained to the local municipalities, NEPA, they've all come in and look at my, my property and no one has yet to reach out to me. So what measures are you guys putting in place to protect us as returning residents going back to Jamaica, who are coming in heavily to invest? Because I own four properties there and I have issues with almost all of them. But this one is the worst.
Thank you.
Very important, very, very important question. You're not the only person who has complained about rogue developers. Now, just to be clear, um, my knowledge of the industry, based upon the portfolios that I hold, um, there are a few developers who have given a bad name to the industry. But you will also know that there are several good developers, reliable, trustworthy people with good reputation, um, that build high-quality homes comparable to anywhere in the world. Now, the circumstances that you have mentioned has come to my attention, based upon where you've said you have purchased. And what I could do is if I, if you could give your name and contact, I will have a direct look at your circumstances.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And just a reminder.
Can someone take our contact?
Yes, um, Mr. Burke, can you take our contact information?
Sorry, just to be clear, that that developer is a private developer. Has nothing to do with any government-sponsored or, uh, government-built housing scheme. That's a private developer.
Alright, I'm sorry, sir, um, you'd have to join the line. No, I'm sorry, we have to, we have a limited time, so we can't follow up. But take the information. Alright, Ms. Burke, Ms. Brown, and just remember, ladies and gentlemen, um, no, I'm saying, take the number.
So, yes, so, 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 so remember now, uh, the, the end product of the home might be, in other words, they may have passed the regulatory scrutiny. But in terms of the finishing, because you've mentioned problems like mold and so forth. So clearly, they would have to be compliant with health standards and investigation, which are slightly different from the real estate standards. And therefore, what I'm saying is, if I get her number, then I can get the specifics of her situation and direct the appropriate entities to address it.
Alright, thank you. And just remember, ladies and gentlemen, keep the question short, we have a limited time and we have to go. Ms. Brown?
To the Minister and, and our Prime Minister, thank you for your informative, um, report on the development and growth of our island. My concern, because everybody has a pet peeve, so to speak, we cannot have a, a view, we cannot have growth and development in so many areas of our country and, and moving forward unless we also consider the environment. And I've not heard either of you talk about the environmental impact of roads and developing and water and all the things that are really critical to the continued success of our country. Can someone speak to the environment, please? Thank you. And I really appreciate all you've said. Thanks.
A very powerful question, very important one. And in fact, that's why I'm here, for the Summit of the Future. It's about ensuring that whatever we do is sustainable. And indeed, sustainability is an important part and indeed has been mainstreamed into what we're doing. So I wish to assure you that consideration and protection of the environment is paramount for the government.
Alright, thank you. Uh, before I go to the next microphone, oh, Minister?
No, it's okay, I just realized the number of persons. But if I get to see her after, I'll share someone.
Okay, alright, sorry. Um, Mr. Prime Minister, I, one of the questions, um, fielded, well, the summary of it, uh, what steps are being taken to integrate agricultural science in schools and improve facilities to engage students in modern agriculture and technical education?
You know, that, that's a question that we could easily answer, but what I would say to you is, let's, let's take the questions from the floors.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright.
So the, the answer to, the answer to that is yes, that is happening.
This is happening and there's investments in BODLES, Agricultural Research Center. There is a lot happening at CASE in poultry expansion and agri-science. Even Ebony Park at HART, et cetera, has a whole new set of, um, technologically-based courses in, um, climate smart technology as well as organics and other, other good things are happening. But I agree with Prime Minister.
Alright, Mr. Reed?
Alright, while they're fixing that mic, I'll come back to.
It's good, it's okay, it's good. Yes, protocol has been established. Now, um, it's a fact that, uh, mental illness has been on the rise, especially amongst young people. What mechanism do you have to combat that?
Alright, so there's, uh, that's an excellent question. Uh, mental health has been an increasing issue across the world, especially after COVID. And it has been something that in Jamaica, its treatment has been significantly constrained over the years by stigma. So one of the things that the Ministry of Health is doing is actually a campaign to de-stigmatize mental health. So going into the schools and, um, actually encouraging churches and other partners to speak about the need to get counseling and help if you have a problem. There's also a hotline, there's a hotline for young people in particular, and there are two youth hubs, we're rolling out more, working with the UN to roll more out across the island, where young people have a safe space to come and talk about the problems that they're having. But there's also a, a hotline that deals particularly with people having suicidal thoughts. But there's a general encouragement, there's been a full rehabilitation of Bellevue, which now has a recreational park and has its standards and beautification have been lifted, so that, I know you all know about the stigma of Bellevue and Mylon, all of that is gone. It's about trying to ensure that people get the help that they need and they get it how they need it. So I want to encourage you that it, or to assure you that it is something that's very much on our agenda. There's also a high school campaign, where we even have wellness benches, where persons are encouraged to take a quiet moment, to think about challenges and to engage with counselors. So it is a very important issue and we are working on it, although it is a massive one.
Thank you, Minister. Uh, Mr. Burke?
Good evening, my name is Alexia. Um, I'm a junior in high school and I wanted to speak, um, well, bring two topics to detail, basically hearing what you said about AI being in healthcare and also high employment rates. Um, and I also wanted to speak on behalf of a lot of kids that are my age that have concerns about this. Um, I have been looking to become a neurosurgeon since the age of four years old. Um, I went to Jamaica in April recently and I saw the campus of the University of the West Indies, um, and I've been looking into that. But after hearing about AI being in healthcare, I was wondering if that wouldn't be considered a possible conflict or a risk that could have due to artificial intelligence being involved in healthcare, which is also involved with life and death situations?
I don't, I don't think that the intention, and that's a fantastic question, and this is the incredible time in the world in which we are. And we were talking today, as a matter of fact, about how, um, being in spaces where young people come, they always introduce a new area of discussion or a new perspective on matters, which is why it's always so important to have you present. So thank you for your question. We're, we're aware that AI has challenges as well as opportunities. And I think the world is trying to figure out, of course, how best we leverage the opportunities and not be crippled by fear of the challenges. So a lot of the work that's happening now is about international cooperation on these issues. In fact, it's one of the things that PM has called for and will call again, uh, call on the world in respect of again tomorrow. Um, we are aware of the sensitivities and it may well be that AI is used to take the stress off of people who are answering the phone at hospitals or at critical care places to move systems that don't require complex decision-making in the first, um, uh, iteration. But that's still taking pressure off people working in the healthcare sector. Um, I think there's a lot of steps to be taken. So I think, um, you raise an excellent question, but there's a lot of work to be done and I don't think you need to fear at this point that people take crazy decisions.
Alright, thank you, Minister, uh, Ms. Brown?
Maybe just following her concern, it is important to know that the AI system that we are developing at the consulate is a private AI system that is dedicated just to the consulate, General of Jamaica. And actually, person's information will not be shared anywhere.
Right, so just to reiterate, so as you know, ChatGPT, Google, Gemini, they share their information widely. What we're doing is closed off, won't be shared anywhere else, so you won't find that your information is all over the internet. Alright, Ms. Brown?
The most honorable doctor, Andrew Michael Holness, on your entourage, I greet you in the mighty name of Jesus. I am Stephanie, originally Richards, from St. Thomas, Dalvey District, underwrite from Mr. Beresford, height of Woodsteele. You can remember that name, sir? Okay? Mr. Prime Minister, I am asking you to give my Member of Parliament an assignment for me, please. I have been, I migrated a number of years now, but I am a born laborite. My blood is green. I campaign very hard when it's election time and social media, I get cursed out. When I used to work in Princess Margaret, I was one man against the PMP when the election is lost. The water situation is very bad and I want to know who must I talk to about my rebate not getting water in Dalvey and in eastern St. Thomas? The water situation, Mr. Charles then had put a tank there and I don't know if it's a sabotage with Water Commission, it's sabotaging the Jamaica Labor Party or what? So I'm asking you, I need some answer about the water situation in Dalvey. There's no water and they keep sending bills, 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 and we paying the bills and we not getting back anything. And if you don't pay the bill, then keep mounting up the bill, the bill, the bill, and you have to pay it and you're not getting any water. And they are aware that there's no water. So please give Ms. Charles the assignment for me, please, when you go back down there to sort out the water problem underneath Mr. McLeod's watch.
Now, listen.
Thank you.
Even if I did not take notes, what you have said is seared in my mind. So when I go back, I am going to look up the water situation in Dalvey and see how best we can alleviate the circumstances there. I appreciate very much your very strident advocacy for your community. God bless you and thank you.
Alright, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Alright, um, just a little reality, we only have five minutes before we have to leave the theater. So we'll take two questions, but we have to.
Extended, extended. The time has, the time has been extended, so.
Alright. Alright, yes, let's go, let's go, alright. Ms., Ms. Reynolds?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I had the opportunity, greetings to everyone, um, on this stage. Thank you so much for this evening. I had the opportunity to attend the town hall back in 2016, when I posed a question as someone who was starting her dissertation journey. I am an occupational therapist and I specialize in autism with children. And we have a very dire situation in Jamaica and I asked a question years ago about how we can repatriate professionals into the special education system? Because I had the opportunity to visit and lecture at UE in 2016, when I met two out of only three working occupational therapists in special ed. So I would like to know, eight years later, what improvements or what infrastructure do you have in place to address the special education deficit, especially the rising increase with children with autism?
Thank you.
I can't give a full, thank you for that question, such an important issue. And I, in fact, was just speaking to a gentleman yesterday who PM had charged with developing a plan for a school for children specifically who are, are on the spectrum. And I need to follow up with you on that and give you the update. But there, one, one thing I can say, and I don't have a full update for you, is that there's now an occupational therapeutic center at Maxfield, uh, on the property of Maxfield Children's Home, but it's not only closed to that home. So it deals with the full spectrum of treatment and it is fully staffed. Uh, we are expanding beyond that in training in some of the basic diagnostics. But I, I know that whatever we are doing, we need to do more because the scope of the problem is deep. Another thing that we do have is an enhanced shadow program, where you can apply to the Ministry of Education in order to get a shadow identified to help your child who is in school.
So, just quickly, because what has happened is that there is an increase in diagnosis.
Yeah.
So that is a direct result of a greater service to help to diagnose the problem. So in, in the last decade, the awareness of children who are on the spectrum has increased in the society and the ability to diagnose has increased, so too the ability to treat. And what the government has done is to increase its budget. So now, uh, children who are diagnosed, uh, can get, uh, at, in some instances, full support totally for fees and treatment. Uh, and they get, as you were saying, Minister, a shadow, they get someone to sit with them in class. And we have built one so far therapeutic center that deals with a whole range of these issues. And the plan is to build about four or five more across the country. So a lot has happened since, including the government making special, uh, allocations to assist parents of children, uh, who are on the spectrum.
But we don't have enough professionals. So if you want to come home, please do. Please do, there's a lot of work and it's for, there's good private business and public business as well. It's an important area and we need professionals like you.
Alright.
Let us.
We need the portal, so you have to create one for us.
Alright, thank you, PM, thank you, Minister. Alright, there's a lady in a wheelchair at the back and she had a question. Mr. Burke, are you with her?
Yes, I am.
Okay, alright, go ahead.
Testing, can you hear me?
Yes, we are.
Good evening, I was the first person here at four thirty PM, traveled across the Bronx, so I beg to please ask my question. Bear with me, please. Good evening, Prime Minister, Dr. Andrew Holness, Minister Kamina Johnson Smith and Consul General, Ms. Allison Wilson. Welcome to the Bronx. I did some research and Jamaican is the dominant black immigrant culture in New York City. The Borough President's Office says there are some over three hundred thousand people of Jamaican descent in areas across the city. I am a proud descendant of Jamaican parentage, my late father from St. Mary's and my mother is from Manchester. I have been going to Jamaica since I was in my mother's womb.
Um, excuse me, I'm sorry, but can you get to the question?
Okay, I'll get to the point.
Yes.
The point is, I love Jamaica so much that during my master's program, I was given information of becoming a citizen of Jamaica. So I received dual citizenship and I travel to Jamaica every year. Unfortunately, due to gun violence, that's why I'm in a wheelchair, my first worry was, can I travel to Jamaica? And luckily, I was blessed with family and people in the community who renovated the home and I can travel to Jamaica in my wheelchair. So my question is about the healthcare system. I had an uncle, retired police sergeant, who was in Mandeville Hospital. I had an aunt who was in Kingston Hospital and the care was detestable. If I asked many Jamaicans here and in Jamaica, and they said, it's the norm, if you don't have money, you suffer or unfortunately you die. So my question is, you can have all the innovative healthcare systems, however, how can you make sure that the quality of care is given to the Jamaican community? Thank you.
I think the Prime Minister was speaking about that earlier and I spoke about that as well. This is the training that's taking place. There's also a culture of care that Minister Tufton has been speaking about, so that, to recognizing that there are challenges in the system. Uh, so we're not only improving infrastructure and the, the conditions in which our clinics and hospitals operate, but we're also trying to deal with training in respect of care. So I, I clearly can't speak to a specific circumstance and I'm very sorry to hear about it, uh, but I don't think there are specific issues that we could take further today.
Alright, thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mister Reed. All right. Next question, we have to move quickly. Mister Reed?
Uh, good evening to everyone. Good evening, Prime Minister and your members that is with you. I'm a Jamaican. My name is Orel Dosad, come from Mandeville. They are my father, Gaston Dosad, right?
Question, sir. Get to the question.
Prime Minister, my question to you is this. Me is a person who come home very regular, right? This year, me and my kids them the home, right? And we have, we're in which the beach them, we have a big problem with the beach. If, if you don't stay in a hotel, it come like so we don't have access to the beach. Me daddy with my youth them, right? And Dumput Beach, which is Harmony Beach right now, by five o'clock them cut off, right? And if them cut off and you don't have a hu- a hotel in a Montego Bay, there's no way for, um, for go the beach, but the one, I think, me don't remember by name if, um, where name the Jimmy Cliff Boulevard, right behind the airport there, so. And me feel like a stranger in my own country. When I ask the people for invest, me buy a liquor house in Mandeville and it's like me I do a Airbnb. And the problem me I have with JPS and cable flow.
All right. What's the question?
So my question to you is, me see, me see, Minister Vaz, him, him I take on certain things, but me I wonder how and what and where I put in place in order to make these company do better? Because right now, me I pay for something when me not get. Right now, my cable is still off. All of me things in my house are smart lock, smart this. And it's like, I don't have no access. Me not have no eyes for me, for me place. You understand?
So the question.
Know the question, one minute, sir.
No, no, get to the question.
How, how can I?
No, I, I appreciate. I, I understand what you're saying. Very quick.
No disrespect, I'm sorry, but you know.
Forgive me if I move very quickly through.
So the, the issue of beaches is a live one. And what the government, the issue, my friend, is not that there aren't any beaches. The issue is that the beaches have to be developed and secured so that people can access them. And what we have been doing, for example, you mentioned Harmony Park. I don't know how, how many of you have gone to Harmony Park and seen what we have built there? It's a, it's a lovely facility and we're going to be building all around Jamaica access like that. Now, the closing time might be an issue, so I can appreciate what you're saying. I look into that to see if you can extend the closing time. But even if you were to have beaches open for whenever, for whatever time, there is still the issue of security and sanitation and so forth. So we are making investments in our beaches. And I want you to be assured that those investments are all going to be free for public access. In terms of the utilities and the standard of service that they are given, the utilities are regulated independently by the Office of Utilities Regulations. We have noticed, however, that there is a fall off in standards. And we have been putting pressure on the OUR and, and the utility company themselves, in particular JPS, to improve their standards. You, you have mentioned the activities of Minister Vaz, who has been very strident with JPS. And we have gotten some results there. We will pay some attention now to the, um, the internet companies and the telecommunications companies to ensure that the services that they are mandated to do, they are actually delivering them.
Okay. Thank you, PM. All right. So Ms. Brown, we'll come to you, but ladies and gentlemen, we have to wrap up very shortly. But one of the things that I want to ask you to do is we're going to reopen the form that we use to collect the questions before so that you can send the questions that you have, that you're not able to ask of the Prime Minister today. And if you have an email address, put that email address there so that we can share it with OPM. And the Prime Minister's Office has committed that they will seek to answer as many of those questions directly to you. All right. So let's move to the next question. Excuse me, we're, we're going back and forth. So he's next.
I think you all need to have a moron berry bell in here. The Prime Minister didn't come to take questions from all of us. He was a common filibuster at the time. Now, Prime Minister, this is a foreign affairs question to you. All right? Now, I don't have to lecture you on the history of African people in the Western Hemisphere. Why didn't you stop this labour rights from filibustering the time? You, you questioned me about, you didn't stop her?
Excuse me, sir. Get to the question, please.
Why don't you all have some respect? This is why Jamaica is the way it is, because you have no respect for yourself. Now, yes, my question to you, Prime Minister, is this. You know the history of Haiti, our family or African people in Haiti. I don't need to lecture you on that. The history is there. Now, the United States has had its boots on the necks of the Africa or African family in Haiti for hundreds of years. The amount of invasion and the massacres that has taken place in Haiti at the hand. I'm gonna, I'm leading up to it. The amount of massacres that has been perpetrated on our family in Haiti. To this day, what I, the question I'm asking you is, what were the incentives that caused Jamaica, that traitor in Kenya, Ruta, and the rest of the Karak people to be sending mercenaries or Buffalo Soldier into Haiti to, to brutalize our people? Right? The United States don't want to do that dirty work anymore. So they hire out quislings to go there and to murder and to massacre our race, our people. I want to know, what is incentive for you leaders to take on such an assignment? That is my question to you.
My friend, I respect your perspective, but I disagree wholeheartedly with what you have said. Jamaica is not. Jamaica is an independent nation and we are a sovereign country. Let us be clear that we were invited by the government of Haiti. Let us be clear. I visited Haiti on a mission. And when I met with all the stakeholders, speaking with Haitians, not with people outside, Haitians, Haitian stakeholders, Haitian politicians, Haitian churches, civil society, intellectuals and academics, they have all said that they need security support. But let's be clear, we are not acting on the directions of anyone. I want that to be clear. This notion that we cannot act with our own agency is false and should be dismissed. We are sending support to Haiti because we have solidarity with the people of Haiti. They have asked for our support. But let us also be clear that it is in our interest guns coming to Jamaica from Haiti. Please, sir, accept that Jamaica can act in its national interest.
All right.
And it is about time that black countries and black nations support each other.
All right. Thank you, Prime Minister. All right. We go to that. My, Mister Burke, the last two questions, Mister Burke and Ms. Reynolds?
All right. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, you said that we scarcely hear, um, we scarcely hear that we want a better economy. To purchase property in Jamaica, why is it quoted in US currency as it's defaulted as the primary currency and not the currency of the land? The prices in US currency is not feasible to Jamaicans that want to return home. I would like to know, how will we, how will you regulate this situation? Because this would be the next step for capital investment growth.
Just, just to be clear, that for a property to be sold in Jamaica, regardless of whatever price is quoted in US, when it gets to the tax office, the prices are in Jamaican dollars. And it, it, there's, so ju- just to be clear, right? So a pri- this is a private transaction between two persons. Government can't intervene and specify. It's, it's, because we do have a free market essentially. But your, your underlying point is, you know, why is, you know, property cost so high? Why is the real estate cost so high? And again, I will point this out to you, because there is great demand. That's, that, be frank with you. We, I give you a, a respectful of the time. We have built a housing development and we have advertised five hundred houses for sale. Twenty-six thousand persons sent in applications. There is a hundred thousand housing deficit in Jamaica. So if you want an, an industry to invest in in Jamaica, real estate and construction, because the demand is there and not just from Jamaicans, but for Jamaicans living overseas. What we would love is more efficiency in construction, innovation and technology. So I'm throwing it out. If you want to invest in Jamaica, real estate is the place to invest.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mister Prime Minister. So the last question goes to the lady by Ms. Reynolds.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, Mister Prime Minister. My name is Kishel Davis. By profession, I work on Wall Street and I'm also competing for Miss World of America. My question is to expand on your point regarding diversifying the Jamaican economy. Looking at Singapore as a case study, between nineteen sixty-four and two thousand twenty-two, the Singaporean economy has expanded from four hundred and sixty-eight million to currently in the billions. A major contributor to its economic growth is within its financial sector that contributes up to thirteen point five percent. Regarding Jamaica and growing the economy, what plans are in place for Jamaica to become a financial hub of the Caribbean to even include South America?
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I will ask the question again. What plans are in place for Jamaica to become the financial hub of the Caribbean to include South America?
All right. So let, let me be clear with you on this. Jamaica is already the financial hub of the Caribbean. Jamaica, you, you may not know this, but Jamaica has the most advanced financial sector in the entire region. Let's be clear on that, including the Dominican Republic. Jamaica's financial sector is really set to become the leader, not necessarily in Central America, but even in Central America, except for Panama, our financial sector has really done well and we continue to strengthen it. And in, in fact, our economic stability has led quite a bit of financial stability to the financial sector. And it is going to become an asset for Jamaica. So my answer to you is, yes, we are already on that path.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much and thank you, Mister Prime Minister. Ladies and gentlemen, unfortunately, we have to exit the building by ten minutes to ten. We have to exit the building. So please, ladies and gentlemen, if you registered for this town hall, I will share an email with you with the questions. And you can send your email. We'll forward them to OPM and the Prime Minister's Office through Minister. Ministers well, can we send to you as well?
Send to OPM, just send to one central.
Okay. So we will send them all to OPM and we'll seek to have the answers to your questions. So again, thank you so much for coming. It's.
Again, thank you all for coming and get home safely. And I hope to see you again, uh, maybe next year. God bless you all and thank you.